Good evening. I'd like to call the meeting to order. And since Stephanie's got her arms full, I'll take attendance. That's okay. I'm here, Alan.
I'm here.
John. Greg. Michelle. Jim. Stephanie's here. Jen. Lisa. Michael.
Here.
Thank you, sir. Julie.
Yeah.
Peter. All right, we have a full house, we have a quorum. We are going to, do you want to, you want to do the motion for it? So we'll let Greg go, since he's got, you don't care.
I'm good.
Okay.
I'm good.
Okay. We've been asked by the Building Committee Chair to give a quick five or so minute update on the AgSTEM building and the progress that the committee and our architects have made on it, so unless there's an objection...
Move to add it to the agenda.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. All those opposed? All those abstained, the motion passes. Thank you. Greg, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much. Is this on? Yeah, there it is. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I'll be as brief as I possibly can. You're more than welcome to come up and take a look at these, at your leisure after the meeting. I want to move this out of the way of the screen, though. There are no changes to the plan, as you see here, but we do have some pictures of the exteriors, and I want to give you a quick tour around the project. Let me tell you where we are. We have received our inland wetland permit. We have received five variances from the zoning board of appeals that we needed to construct the project. We have received a report from the Planning Commission under 824 that we're not inconsistent with the Town Plan of Conservation and Development, which satisfies our bond council, and we have one more commission to go to. In the meantime, we have been to the Department of Administrative Services. One of the issues I know that was of concern was whether or not the minor tweaking of the square footage of the building, the addition, was going to be an issue or problem for them. The answer is, it is not a problem for them. So that issue's been resolved. I'd like to give you a brief tour of the facility that's been prepared by our architects, and I'm just going to let the thing run. It's very short. There are three short videos here. If I don't mess it up... There we go. As you can see, you're entering the site. You're seeing the AgSTEM, the new AgSTEM building there. And as you move around it, you'll see what it's going to look like. Those are the, that's the north addition, those are the shops. You can see the clear story light at the top. Whoops, I don't know what this is. But this is not next. All right. All right, this is down at the science end of the building. You're going to come around the existing building, and you will see there the extension that, that's the, so those are the science labs. This little extension at the back is the headhouse, and there is the greenhouse. This area around the greenhouse is going to be a demonstration farm field, where they're going to be growing various crops. And finally, this is the animal demonstration building. This is a metal-clad building with a brick area on the bottom to absorb the worst fences, so the building doesn't get dented. Those are doors, not windows. They're Dutch doors. The top opens for animals to be able to look out, horses in particular there. Those large windows on the back of the building are actually like garage doors. They open to allow air into that space. That's the animal demonstration building. And there you go. You have no questions? That's all I have for this evening.
Are there any questions for Greg? Greg, will we, oh, Michelle? Go.
I'm just wondering, are you looking for feedback, or just questions?
I'll take feedback.
Well, not, I mean, obviously, what happens inside is most important, and I love the animal demonstration building. That looks beautiful. I feel like the other two additions to the building, their flat roof, they don't have, I don't, they're not hugely inspiring to me. I would like to see roofs or some, something. I've just been to the agri-science additions at Nanawag and Womago, and they're really beautiful and sort of inspiring, so that, but, and maybe this, that's, maybe this isn't the design part, this is just the, what's going on inside part. I don't know. That's it.
It appears that our architects have left. I will report to them that you find their design uninspiring.
No, that's not what I mean. I just, you know, I, yeah. I don't want to take up a lot of this meeting time to talk about it. I don't even know if that, this is the time for the...
All right. How about if we talk offline? You can, you can tell me about your disappointment in the product.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Greg, will you post these, is your intention to post these on the website?
Yeah, as a matter of fact, there's going to be a link to that on our website, and you'll be able to access that. We can't, we can't just send it to you, because it's a gigantic file. But there will be a link on the website where you can get it, as well as these, these renderings here that you see, which are basically taken off of that. Such is the world we live in, that we can take a tour.
Thank you, Greg. I think Pete had a question.
You're going to ask me that again? I believe it is around 40,000 square feet. It's the same as it's always been. It hasn't changed. With the, with that little, there was a little bump down, there was a bump down, then there was a little bump up, and that's the same, it's the same as it's been for, for better part of half a year. And it's about 40,000 feet.
I don't need that right now, but I'm, I just want to know, would that...
I can't, I mean, I don't know. I don't know whether or not they've done specific calculations on what it costs to heat or light, but I guarantee you, it will be a lot cheaper to operate these buildings than it will be to operate this building. Because your lights are all going to be LEDs, your walls actually have, are properly insulated and, and are better walls. Now, the, the, that may be different for the building with the horse and animals in it, because that building is designed not to be particularly well-heated in certain spaces where they are, but the classroom in it is heated, is properly heated. But as far as actual operation costs, we expect this to be the most efficient, the most efficient buildings in Region 12.
Are you going to present to us an estimate at some point to the board?
I don't know. I honestly don't know if we are, because we have to build it. You're going to build it, they'll build it to the standards that they can build it, and that's as far as you're going to go. So I don't know what matters. The problem is, is it's going to cost what it costs to heat it and to light it, and it's going to be less expensive per square foot, I would think, than this building, or any of the other buildings in the region.
Okay, okay.
Okay?
All right, we're going to move to the next item on the agenda, is a senior class trip to Six Flags in New Jersey. Pat, is there anything in particular you wanted to say or add?
Only that, the reason it's coming so late to the board is that both advisors thought the other advisor had sent in the paperwork. So that's why it's so late.
So, as usual, we need board approval for the field trip, so may I have a motion?
Move to approve the senior class trip to Six Flags in Arizona, New Jersey, Crystal City, Virginia, and Washington DC on April 6th through 8th, 2018.
Yeah.
All three locations.
Second.
Okay. Motion's been seconded. Unless there's any discussion, all those, John?
What's the significance of Crystal City? Just for information.
Crystal, who wants to, anybody? Sure. No?
I would say, having been a native of that area, I can tell you that Crystal City is right across the river from Washington DC, so it's practically right there.
Yep. All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All those abstained? Motion passes unanimously. Have fun. Especially in Crystal City. We, we need to add another item to the budget. We have a request to, from Barbara Henry to address the board tonight, so may I have a motion to add that to the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
I have a question. Is there, is there no public comment on this meeting?
No. It was not on the agenda.
Because it's a special meeting?
Because it's a special meeting.
Does any, do we need to let people comment if Barbara's going to be speaking, if anybody's going to?
I thought Barbara was the only one. Is there somebody else?
I don't know.
Yeah, that's, that's far enough. We're going to open up the floor. I only thought we had one request, so...
Oh, okay, well, we can just make it.
So we could just, all right, we could just add public comment and keep it more generic and as usual, so. Again, is there a motion?
Do we have to retrade, we have to unmove the other one?
I don't think so.
Friendly amendment?
Fine, we're going to, the motion on the floor is to add public comment to the agenda. All those, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All those abstained? Motion passes unanimously. Barbara, floor is yours.
Thank you. I'm only going to take a couple of minutes of your time. I have to run to have a budget meeting with our Board of Finance at 7:00, so. The board representatives from Roxbury have already heard from me. Some of you also have heard from me in emails about the concern that I have about this budget. Pat, I have the utmost respect for you. You already know, I told you, that the budget going up 4% is unbelievable to me in these times. And I know what you're dealing with. I've sat in your seat in the past, and I sit in a seat now that I struggle every day to try and get our budget down, to always compensate for the school budget. But we're at the point where that is just a very difficult thing to do from now on. And I am here, I'm not here to tell you how to micromanage this budget, but for Roxbury to get a $650,000 increase over the $500,000 increase last year, it's just not sustainable for us. The other two towns, I don't know if they've expressed anything, but Bridgewater's is $50,000, and Washington is $150,000. I know that it's based on student population. We're losing students. We just happen to be losing them slower. And, but there has got to be something, I am imploring you to find a way to get this budget down. And this doesn't even include the AgSTEM project, because that's an unknown, as far as I know. Because I keep hearing, you know, the numbers are changing, and I'm anxious to see where that's going to land, as you probably are. So, like I said, I am not here to tell you where to find this money. I'm not asking you to cut teachers. I'm not asking you to cut programs. I'm asking you to look at things like transportation, as I said. And Bob, I know you responded, but, you know, we have an awful lot of empty school buses. And I went to the legislature and said, it's my understanding for many years that you have to provide a seat for every child on the bus. That is really not the case. You have to provide busing, but there's no reason why people cannot sign up in the beginning of the year and say, I am going to use the bus, or I'm not going to use the bus. And then, I know that everybody wants their schools, but we cannot, like I said, sustain this trajectory of the budget. So there's got to be some consideration to looking at, well, maybe we don't stop at every driveway. Maybe we have five bus stops in the town, and you have to get to it. And I know people aren't going to like it, but these are the things that we're going to have to give in, I think, because I just don't know how we're going to keep it up. So, I'm just asking you to dig deeper. Bob, I know how hard you work. I've worked with you many, many years, even when I was on the board. I had several superintendents ago, I remember, we would sit and go line by line by line of the budget, looking for where's Waldo. And I'm not saying that Waldo's in there, hidden somewhere, but there's got to be some money to be found. I know that there have been comments, I know Mr. Tagley has said, that, you know what? The people voted for these schools, and this is the cost. Yep, we voted for those schools, but not at any cost. I always said that, not at any cost. So, again, I'm just imploring you, please, look at this budget. You've got to find some money in it to take away. The other thing that Roxbury's dealing with, as are the other towns, you know, we were zeroed out for state aid, so there's $158,000 that passed from the state to the town that we gave, and it's the ECS money, and we're getting zero. So I'm finding that in our budget. I don't think that that's fair. And so, the other two towns, I'm sure, would look, would want to get it too. You know, they're, they're footing the bill for that. But $158,000 this year is a lot of money to us, along with all the other things that have been zeroed out. So Roxbury, I don't want to sit here and cry, but we, you know, we're taking this hit. Our budget's going down if the Board of Finance tonight agrees with that. We got zeroed out on state aid, and our grand list has gone down. And so, we've just got the triple whammy here. And we need help, and I'm asking you to find it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
I must really like you guys. It's my husband's birthday, and I'm here. First, I just want to talk about tuition in. I understand that there's a new tuition in policy that's going to come before the full board for a vote soon. The suggestions will have families paying their tuition payment in full, as opposed to two installments as they currently do. While this sounds good to solve potential legal issues, this may greatly impact the current family's financial situations and cause new unforeseen problems. As we work to retain every single family in this region, I would ask for a few things as you work through this policy. Number one, allow these families to use either check, which they can now, or credit card to pay the region. Number two, grandfather current families in, so as not to risk losing them. Three, provide all tuition in families with a copy of the new policy with a cover letter explaining the final outcome. Four, provide the schools, especially Burnham, that has an established program, with an easy-to-follow, step-by-step process letter regarding tuition that can be handed to our prospective families. I currently have five families in our pipeline that have been told of the current payment plan, but not of the new proposed one. So again, we need every family to join our region and stay. Next, last week, SOS and Burnham PTO were shocked to watch the board meeting video discussing bringing up consolidation again by a relatively new board member. I would hope the rest of you would not let history repeat itself. Every time this board feels the slightest bit of heat on money, it's back to the old idea of consolidation. So this budget year, you have exorbitant medical costs. Okay, so that must be the elementary's fault. You pay your super, the highest per student in the state, but that must be the elementary school's fault, too. You refuse to cut top-heavy and costly administration, which has been a beef of the voters for years, but again, that must be the elementary's fault. And not locking in the biggest city and supplier of students for the AgSTEM program, which feasibly turns our saving grace into a taxpayer costly program, distract by blaming the elementaries. All of this would result in deterring parents from sending towns, bad PR for years to come, and not solving your core problems. How many times do you touch the hot stove with the same failing idea and not learn the lesson? And do you really think that one town's 90% of voters has suddenly changed to 49%? Fool's errand. We already have dispelled the long-held belief that the elementaries are the cost driver. In fact, Burnham is something like 7% of the overall budget, so we are not open at any cost. We were pleased to see so many board members, after the last vote, understanding that concept. What is also still false is the notion of building a new building while maintaining three buildings, while decimating three towns, is somehow a cost saver. We have survived attempts for bad budget ideas from cutting nurses, Spanish teachers, et cetera. Despite all of those stellar payback attempts, we have a 20% increase in families and more in the pipeline. I suspect we will have new ideas for cost savings, suggestions targeting the elementary parents. You don't get to continuously punish the voters for their will. Oh, and you need these parents to pass your budget, but when it doesn't, let's blame and punish the elementaries. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any further? Okay, seeing none, let's move on to our next agenda item, which is the budget discussion led by Michelle.
All right. So last week, the board voted to reduce the, the proposed budget by another $56,000 in cap, and move that into the capital. So Bob's going to let us know where that leaves us, and we asked, there were several, we discussed a lot of places to look for savings, and we asked the administration to come back with some information about the busing, and about staffing, and any other places that they could think of for savings. So I guess what we should do is first, see where we stand now with the $56,000 that we took out, and then decide where, where we want our discussion to start, and we'll go topic by topic to decide if those are places we want to look for cuts. So, Bob?
Yeah, the budget started at 3.97%, and after that meeting on the 19th, removing the 56.7, it now stands at 3.71%.
Into the 1%. Okay, so we're at 3.71%.
Correct.
Thank you. So, the feeling of the board last week was that we wanted to look for additional cuts. We felt that that was probably not enough. I would propose we start with the busing conversation. Does anyone, because that's kind of what we spent a lot of time on last week, and Bob said he would come back with numbers. Does anyone else, so, we're good with that? All right, so if you could help us out, Bob?
Sure. If you could pass these around. We went back and, as we usually do, we took a little closer look at it, a little earlier than we normally do this, and we can eliminate two buses, one in Washington and one in Roxbury. What you have in front of you is the proposal to eliminate the Washington and the Roxbury bus. I could walk you through these things. It eliminates Bus 6 out of Washington, and it does it in such a way that what we're doing is trying to consolidate some stops and move them closer. We looked at the students and where they're located. And the longest that anybody would be impacted is 1/10 of a mile. There's a couple here. There's one that goes, it's kind of a crazy thing that happens, but it's on East Shore Road. They would come down, and instead of us going all the way out to Warren, turn around and come back, it eliminates a big chunk of time on that vehicle. There's another where, New Preston Hill Road, they walk to Church Street, that's about 400 feet, that's on this list as well. And Wheaton and Schofield, we consolidated that. We determined it's less than 1/10 of a mile, but we listed it as that. 20 students will now ride Bus 10, and we're going to need to start this route five minutes earlier to make the cut of one vehicle. And in the primary route, the other half of this thing, all the stops that are on, will be put onto Bus 10. And we have one situation where it's a 1/10 of a mile change. Again, it's one of those situations in the routing of it, and who's left at this moment in time, but the route itself would stay on time, so we're really not talking any huge significant increases in time, other than looking closely and consolidating where we need to go. In the Roxbury one, that's the second page, this proposed to eliminate Van 19, and all the stops will go onto Bus 4, except for one, which will go onto Bus 17. I have maps to how this all worked out, but it's Botzford Hill, it'll stay on 17. Everybody else goes onto Bus 4. The next part of this is Perkins and Garnett Stop, which is actually in Southbury. That gets put back to where it was for years, on Mallory and Garnett. So those folks would just come up to Mallory and Garnett, and we avoid going into Southbury, which added a lot of time to this thing.
Bob?
Yes?
Do you know how, how far that is?
It's, it's a road that, I think, when we did it the last time, was about a quarter of a mile to the last house, but it's, it's a bad road. You can't go through it, so you have to go all the way around.
No, I mean, how far the...
The kids would come back.
By changing the stop, the students would have to go.
About a quarter of a mile.
Quarter of a mile. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Then, Bus 4 would make stops on, instead of going through Transylvania, because that'll be, that bus is going to be going, they would move stops onto Bus 5, one end of Transylvania and the other, and so they can choose which end of the road they want to get to, but we wouldn't have to go through and transverse through. I think the town would like it, too, because it's a pain when we have bad inclement weather, but it's a dirt road that they can get to either end of it.
And do you know how far those are? Like, if you split it in half?
It, those, that whole thing is, one side of it, the last child is probably about a quarter of a mile to the corner of 67, and the other ones go up the other end, but they could all go to either end. And that's, that's less than a half a mile, I think.
Okay. Thank you.
And then, the third change is that we wouldn't go any further than East Flag Swamp, and that would become Mallory and East Flag Swamp, and we would turn around there, and there's some folks living on East Flag Swamp, and that's about a 1/10 of a mile, they'd have to come out to that intersection. This is what was done years ago. We would turn around and get back out.
And do you know how far that one is?
About a tenth of a mile.
Tenth? Okay.
Then, the other stop that we would eliminate to make this work is on Lower County Road. They would come and meet the bus, and there's two ends of this, the road that goes through to the dump, and then down by the cemetery and out the other end. The road itself isn't great to be doing that, anyway, but one part of them can go down to the Lower County on one end. The others would come out to 317, and splitting the difference is about a half mile on either end, but it's closer on one side than the other, because there's fewer houses. But, and there's the dump in the middle of the whole thing.
So this is just a shi'pog?
No, it's both. It affects both sides. It affects both kindergarten, or not kindergarten, but elementary and...
Both elementary and...
Because that one bus is going to be gone. We're going to be moving kids around.
Okay, okay, yeah, you just split for the...
Right. All of that is done. Now, what I did for you, so you get a sense of what we're doing, I created a chart. There are currently 20 vehicles running. When I first got... When I first got back, there were 26, but over time, we've eliminated some things. And that was watching what we were doing and making the changes. And basically, you could see, I listed it vehicles by school, and then ultimately vehicles by area, what is running in the various towns. So within Bridgewater, there'll be three buses. Right now, Roxbury has five, and one could come out is four. Washington is 6.5, one comes out is 5.5. Bridgewater, we took a vehicle out and consolidated things this past year. If we hadn't done that, it would have looked like we'd had 21 buses, but we really only have 20, so that already got done. And the in-district and the out-of-district are things that are shared out. You could see what happens if you look across. The out-of-district, there's your Nanoag and your two vote tech schools they have to run, but they're shared off on one of those buses. And the in-district, our Reach and Montessori's. I just separated them because they're not in, the Reach is ours, but the Montessori isn't, but they're kind of not full days. For the Reach, the Montessori is, we have afternoon and morning on that one. So that's how it would look when we're done. Overall, a reduction of two vehicles would save $113,386.
Can you say that again? One thirteen, what?
Three eighty-six. Yes. Pardon? Yeah, there's not going to be a lot of savings in the fuel side of this thing, because we're still making a lot of the same places, we're just consolidating. We're still responsible for $42,000. Any above that, they're going to pay for it. So we've been running ahead of that $42,000 number anyway.
Bob?
Yes?
Can I ask a question? Back on the Roxbury bus?
Yes.
Because on the Washington one, you let us know that the high school one would start five minutes earlier and that the Wash, that the primary was the same.
Right.
So basically, the runtimes are...
They're going to be the same.
Similar. How about Roxbury?
Same thing. The start and end times should be the same. It's just that we're consolidating and eliminating more.
Right, so we're not going to have to pick up earlier the total run?
No, we shouldn't have to.
Run.
You know, and again, when things shake out, by the time you actually start again in August, people can move into strange places, and they can move out of places that we would like them to see, so we don't have to go as far. But every summer, we go through this exercise. We took a really hard look at it because of the budget situation, really squeezed it down, and I worked with bus company on this for the last 10 days, trying to come up with, made sure that what we had, and we had the drivers check distances and all.
Thank you. Can I, I just wanted to let everyone know, because we talked about this last week, I looked up our policy that we have, and I also looked up state statute, and interestingly, they are, they're pretty...
Pretty close.
They're the same in the guidelines.
Statute is actually guideline by the state.
Yeah, it's a guideline. And so what we have to do is provide transportation if reasonable and desirable. That's really all we have to do. But their guidelines for walking were for K through 3, less than a mile, 4th through 8th grade, less than 1.5 miles, and 9th through 12, less than 2 miles. So, and that is what our policy, we have not touched our policy since 1998, but it's a, it's a pretty long policy. It follows statute, the guidelines of the statute. So, so thank you very much, Bob, for doing all of that research. Michael?
I don't think anyone would, would suggest that we have long walks for students, just in terms of safety issues. But I think what Barbara Henry was proposing would be centralized drop spots, the old-fashioned bus stops, if you will, where parents would be dropping their students. There'd be a large group of students, I assume, at that bus stop. And I'm just wondering the feasibility of doing that, because then we could, as much as I appreciate the work that Bob's done, we might be able to make even more cuts if we had those kinds of centralized bus stops where students would be dropped off by parents.
Well, I, after having spoken with a few people, I'm concerned about the central stops, because that would require somebody drive a student. At least in all of these situations, the longest walk, and that was of a high school student, would be just under half a mile. So if, for example, there wasn't a car at home, a child could still get to school. If a parent wanted to drive them to the bus stop, they certainly could, right? You're never precluded from that. We all see, even at the end of the driveway, parents sitting in cars. So they could do that. But at least this way, if there's not a car at home, a child could still get to school. And attendance is, is one of our accountability indexes, indices. I would not want transporta, I would be hesitant to go that far. I think, I support these, the cut of these two buses. I think that seems reasonable. We're not adding too much time, we're not adding walks that are too long. Having been on the board when we moved some stops a while back, I think we're going to hear about this. So if we moved, then all of a sudden, if we went from having to walk, you know, 1/10 of a mile to having to be driven 2 and 1/2 miles to a central spot, I, I wouldn't support that, because I don't feel that that's in the nature of the, of public transportation. But I think we'd hear a lot about that. So I would support these two as a first step, but I mean, I want...
Just to follow up on that, Michelle, I don't know if when you, or Bob, maybe when you were doing your due diligence on this, are there districts that are doing what Barbara Henry is proposing? Are there some rural districts, for example, that, that have these centralized drop spots that don't really say, we're, you know, we're no longer going to go with the model of, of, you know, pick up at your driveway? We can't do that anymore? I'm just wondering, or, or is she proposing something that's really outside the norm?
Well, it's outside the state guidelines, definitely. But I don't know about the norm.
There's also an unintended, as I mentioned before, an unintended consequence. And one of the worst situations you could run into, you can gather them in the morning, but if you show up there in the afternoon and drop them off, and there's nobody there, that bus is going to open the door, they're there, and if people, I mean, we have situations now where we have a lot of latchkey kids, and they're getting into their house themselves. I mean, we don't physically see it, but we know we drop them off, there's nobody standing out there getting them. And then, to make matters worse, there are times when we actually have the non-show parents, if you will, and we, you know, they're making a lot of phone calls for that. I don't know who's going to control when you have these centralized stops and people aren't there to get these kids. It's a problem.
Yeah, that's a good point.
There's, there's really, we looked at where you would put these and where you would gather people, and there's really no big parking lots around these places, and there's really no areas. I mean, you could say it's in the school yard, but I mean, people are coming and going in there as well. And now you have a bunch of kids in there, whether the parents drop them off, or they're going to stay with them? Are they going to supervise them until the bus gets there? Who's there? There's, again, that unintended consequence.
It adds a lot. Greg and then Julie?
I was going to say, as someone who walked 10 miles to school uphill both ways...
In a blizzard.
In a blizzard, yeah. You know, the real problem we have here is we don't have, I mean, we don't have back, the dirt roads are the only quiet roads, really. We don't, we have a lot of roads that are just too busy to have kids walk on. We don't have sidewalks in this town. In Roxbury, we don't have them largely, in Washington and Bridgewater either. There are a few, but they're not, they're not universal. And so we've got unique problems here on this transportation. But you know, it seems to me that, I was a latchkey kid, and I think I turned out okay. Someone might dispute that, but you know, people cope, and they will deal with it and cope in whatever way we have to, we have to go. Because I understand that the problem is the budget isn't sustainable, and it needs to be reduced, it needs to be brought down. The problem, once again, though, I'm, you're right, you're going to hear about this, because in general, the people who are affected by this are the parents, and they vote for the budget. But unfortunately, they may be seeing a budget not pass, and we may have to take even more draconian steps on these buses. You know, the one thing that does tend to work is the late buses. They tend to work very well. I mean, they come, and for the number of kids that they drop off, they're always met by someone, and they, they go home. So it is, if that were the model, and that's where we started, I don't think you'd hear any problems, but that's not where we're starting. And I admit, it's getting people over the hump to get to a thing that's a little bit less convenient than, and you're still going to have to pick up some kids at their driveway, because you can't walk on, on the state highways. The traffic is moving at too high a speed, and there's no place to go. And so there's the problem. So I get it, but, but I do think that we, we probably can walk a tenth of a mile. I mean, bear in mind that a tenth of a mile is less than the distance from where you're standing to the parking lot, the north parking lot.
Yeah, it's not very far.
It's not really a long distance. But some of these kids, though, on Transylvania, are going to be walking longer than that, potentially. If they live in the middle of the road, that road's about 3/4 of a mile long, maybe a little bit longer. So you're looking at walking not quite half a mile, but maybe 3, you know, a third of a mile. Yeah. No, I understand, they go halfway, but if the road's 3/4 a mile long, it's 0.37 each way from the middle, so depending on where you are.
Yeah. Julie?
Yeah, just a question for Bob. On the Montessori bus, I know you had said that in some cases, it's cheaper to pay the parents out as opposed to providing a bus. So do we have a lot of Montessori kids using the bus, and is that something to look at?
It's not Montessori that we're paying out, okay? It's Rumsey.
The parents.
Or the Gunnery. And those parents are the ones, because the way the state law is written, and they do, in this case, Gunnery doesn't have 50% plus one student in Connecticut. We don't have to provide them transportation. The number of parents in Rumsey, okay, are far cheaper to pay them out than it would be to put a bus in and then try to get everybody from where they're, I mean, some of them actually live there. Some of them live around the area. To try to get them all at the same time and bring them there, it's cheaper to do it the other way. If it wasn't, I wouldn't do it. But that's, there's, that's that, Montessori, there's sufficient number of kids around the three towns. It's a half and a half, basically, because we're using it for the early runs on that as well. You could see it in the grid, and those kids get brought over to Montessori. So it would cost us more money the other way.
Right, okay, thanks.
Are there any other, oh, Pete, sorry.
Yeah, I just have a question. If a school system like us has been doing something for 25, 30, 40 years a certain way, and now we, for some reason, whatever the reason may be, want arbitrarily change how we've been doing business, do we know any legal, have you checked our attorney to find out whether we can arbitrarily change what's been in place for many years? Or do we have that authority to do what we want to do regarding busing?
In this case, it's not going to impact the students, it's still within the guidelines.
Okay.
We do this every year anyway.
Right.
Okay? Every time we recast the bus routes, the stops change, the times change, because kids move around. You have the authority to do that. You don't run things because you went there for 20 years.
Right.
At the end of 20 years, the kids aren't there anymore. The family has no more children, you don't go there. These things happen all the time.
Okay.
Yep.
I, I think that the reduction of the two buses is certainly doable. I think what the board has to understand is that once you make these changes, you will be getting some parent concerns, probably in August, when the bus routes come out.
We get that.
And, and you, you know, when I first got here, I literally was driving around to see, you know, how far kids were moving, and you just have to stand, you know, united. So if you make this move, you're making the decision that this is what we're doing and we're moving forward. If you cannot do that as a group, then you cannot make this change, from my standpoint.
Alan?
Yeah, you know, I was most concerned with time of the bus routes, which doesn't appear to have changed, and also the walking distances. And I actually had to do the math, because I didn't know what 1/10 of a mile was. It's about 528 feet.
You got it.
And I realized that when we first, when we first moved to this region, we figured out that our children would be picked up from Route 67, and we live, as it turns out, I just did this now, about a little over 4/10 of a mile from there. And this has been 10 years now, when they were little, making sure we got into the bus stop, and when they're bigger, now they can walk up. There were times when there were no cars, and one of us would walk down with them for whatever, you know, repairs or people out. So just from my own experience, and I know, as Ms. Gallagher always says, that's a very small data set, it is doable. And I, and I didn't want to hear that anything was greater than that. 4/10 of a mile is almost half a mile, and I think the greatest was half a mile. So I think in terms of, of distance, as far as being, you know, either accompanying distance or simply walking distance in any weather, and in terms of there not being any sudden bus trips, which will be 20 minutes longer than they were, I think this is, you know, I came to this meeting having heard about transportation, thinking, oh my God, let's not even touch this. But it seems like Bob has done a really good job on making, you know, over $100,000 in cuts almost painless, so I would be, I would be willing to support this.
Yep. John?
Yeah, I, I don't think the central meat point is that realistic. There's too many variables. The car breaks down, the parent has to leave a half hour early for work, or is held in traffic for 15 or 20 minutes, or comes home from work late, and just the meat points won't coordinate each and every day throughout the 180-plus days of the school year. So I would go with the reduction of one bus and one van. How many students does that involve total?
They're all going to have places in the other, we're just putting them on other vehicles.
Approximately how many?
Yeah, it's going to affect, I think there were in Roxbury, it's either 10 or 12, and in Washington is 6. I mean, it's minor number of students, but...
So now you're dealing with...
Distances.
Right, and there's other kids that are going to get swatted around. Yeah, so you're only dealing with 18 families that would be involved.
Not even, because a couple of them have two kids in the family.
Right. Okay, perfect.
But, and I thank Ellen for what he said, but it was an effort on Pam's part as well, and we were, Pam and the bus company worked very hard with this, along with myself, and we knew what you needed to do, and this is the best we could come up with.
All right, thank you. Michael?
Just a quick question, Bob. I'm sure you figured this out already, but if we do approve cutting those two buses, what would that bring us our new budget down to?
It would bring it down to 3.18.
All right. Are we, are we ready to vote on the buses?
I don't think there's any motion.
Oh, that's right. Somebody would like to make a motion about cutting the two buses?
What is the logistics of this, adding a, adding a new motion to the agenda?
Well, we actually, usually, we would just go kind of line by line and vote, like we did when we voted to take the money, the $56,000. So we're not actually voting on the total budget, so I'm not really...
Maybe we should wait until we've reached a completion as far as what cuts we want to make. What do you think? Just because, just because of the agenda.
I think before we sign off on a wide, we should just probably tick through the other options that are available to us.
Okay.
And then maybe...
And then decide?
Figure out which ones, you know, we want to, what do you think?
Well, I just know in the past, it can be challenging to figure out, because, so let's, let's just say we talk about staff and, I don't know, a third thing, three, there are three things, and, and you try to put them up in different combos, and if they don't pass, then you got to figure out which...
I was, I was trying to keep it, I guess in my mind, simpler, to just say, why don't we just go through the things, discuss them, and then we could circle back and say, okay, let's, the busing...
Okay, you want to see what else is on the table?
Because if there's something else that, if there are a list of five things, the busing may seem attractive now, but after you finish with the five, it may seem less attractive. So there are choices to be made. That's where I was coming from.
Okay.
I was just going to just be as honest, how you parent...
Right, I know, I guess, I guess in the past, it... Right, I know, I guess, I guess in the past, it was more, it was more of like a straw pull, like, because, because then, once we got to the end, we would move on the total number, but we knew that we had agreement on each.
On what the pieces are.
On the pieces.
Yeah, I thought we were voting.
Right, otherwise the motions got really.
Yeah, I thought we were voting in the end, the motion would be on the bottom line budget after.
Oh, no, no, no.
You know.
No, this is just a, hey, are we on the same page on this and then we move on to the next one? Because otherwise then only somebody who was on the winning side can propose the next. It gets really messy. We've done it before.
Well, I'll tell you what.
Yeah.
You're the treasurer. You can run this portion however you think is most efficient.
I.
So you, so I'll defer to what you would like to do next.
All right. Well, based also on our conversation from last week, that this was one of the areas we were interested in looking first, I would like, I guess what we would call a straw pull on just the busing. And then we will continue to hear, we won't propose a final number until we feel that we're, we're ready. Is that, is everyone? All right. So, so how many people are comfortable with the $113,386 cut for the two buses as proposed by Bob?
Gentlemen?
Guys?
Are you going to vote for that or no?
They are. All right, Jen? Yes, no? Okay. So, all right, thank you very much, Bob. That was, that was really helpful. All right, one of the next, well, actually what, what I had asked the administration to do is sort of prioritize where they felt the next places they would look. Suggestions from us were, were staff, so I, but Pat, if you could.
Okay, so I think my next suggestion will be to cut the other part of the art teacher at Shapag. So we originally, in my original proposal, we cut .4 and now I am adding .6 to that. So that would be a reduction of $38,555. And Kim has assured me that she will be able to combine classes if we need to, but continue the program as such without any hardship to the students. So that is the suggestion.
Greg?
Could we elaborate on that? I would like to know how they plan to deliver this. I mean, when you talk about combining classes, I'd like to get some understanding of how that's going to function and how that's going to work. How many teachers, art teachers do you have? After the reduction of four plus six? All right, well, the question I have is, is when you move, when you move beginning students and intermediate students into the same classroom, don't you have necessity short both of them? Because you simply don't have enough time to focus on the skill level that each person needs. And aren't you, or are you not? Maybe I'm wrong, but, okay?
Kim, as a follow-up? The, so, so you said the registration at the moment supports 10 sections? Is that with the combining you're talking about or that was just, okay, that's with. Okay, so that's five classes per teacher. Okay, thank you. Okay, Alan?
Yeah, I, you know, I'm thinking this sounds great, but then you have to think about, I mean, we're kind of in this, this is pulling for a little bit of an overview. We're in this position now because we've all grown accustomed to having very low or no budget increases over the last five years or so. So we're now trying to re-achieve that as we are beginning to see expenses that are going to be needed in, in our budgets as they, as they come up, especially obviously in terms of things that we're seeing this year, like increased health insurance or increased needs for, at least at this point, the bands and then the bond payments for Ag STEM. So every cut that we make to achieve a goal now only makes any new expenses and new percentages look that much worse. And the reason I bring it up now is art teachers, the first thing I thought, well, this is great. We have 10 sections now, that seems to be perfect. But then what happens when we have Ag STEM in two, three years and now we have new students? And we're supposed to really be increasing our student population by a great number of students, obviously, we hope. And the idea is that these Ag STEM students will be, the Shapag students won't necessarily be taking Ag STEM courses or may not be even allowed to, except for the few electives. But certainly in the other way, all the Ag STEM students will be filling in in all of our other classes. At some point, we may need to add an art teacher then. And when we do, that will be a frightening and horrifying budgetary experience for Barbara Henry at that point, when we will also be adding the expense of bond payments. So I just want us all to be, I'm just saying this now, that we have to be very careful. If we work this hard to reduce based on our size, we know that we are heading into, we are hoping and planning for an area where our size will increase, we have to be careful and remember, and it's going to be hard to remember because we always forget, that there will be potentially necessary increases at that point, which will look that much worse when we have to fill in for cuts we've made now.
Um, Kim, did you want to speak to that? Because we, we spoke about that. that the Ag STEM students have to take. Yeah. Right? We're, we're holding on to the core because they have to take the core, but the electives, they're going to be busy with their own elective. So I, I think the chances of us needing to add an art teacher back are smaller, at least than the core classes. Lisa and then Michael?
I know we need to decrease the budget and I was hoping we could start somewhere else besides teachers. And I know it's not affecting an individual teacher or programs or classes, but I just thought, I, I just don't know if I want to start with teachers. I think there was maybe some other places in the budget that we can look and maybe come back to this, but I really, especially art, you know, again, we're very heavy on the sciences and the maths. That's not one place I'm in favor of reduction. So if we could start maybe somewhere else besides teachers and classes, I would feel more comfortable with that.
Okay, Michael?
Just two hopefully quick questions. In terms of those 10 sections that you mentioned that we'd be going down to, Kim, would, what would the class size ranges be? And so, since you mentioned drawing and painting, that was one of the examples you gave earlier, is that, is that a class that has been blended in the past, as you said? So this is, this is something that we've done in the past and we're simply going back to it now? Okay. There's no courses that are going to be put together that don't necessarily have such a logical blend, like you wouldn't be putting sculpture with drawing and painting, for example? Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to mention, while I, it appears that this, this cut would work, I'm always hesitant to, when we cut staff, I know that it tightens up the schedule and it makes the schedule less flexible. And so, how, you know, that, that's just a challenge that it may be inevitable that we have to deal with, but it usually makes getting what you want a little more challenging. Does anyone else have questions or comments about the teacher? I might ask.
Move on to something else.
Yeah, move on to something else and then we'll kind of see where, see how we're feeling about that.
So after Bob and I did another look see at the budget, we were able to see that we have two and a half para professionals in the special education budget that began the beginning of the year. Some left, kids left, kids came back. We just, last week, Ally was saying we need another para. So it's a very fluid situation. But we were able to reduce the budget by two and a half paras. And also, the middle school no longer goes on the project team trip, is it the middle school, am I right?
Leadership?
The leadership. Right, they're doing a different thing? Yes. So that's a $5,600 stipend. So that cut, which is really not going to hurt anybody at this point, is $70,405.
Wait, is 70, that's including 2.5 paras and.
2.5 paras, the project team coordinator and FICA Medicare on the above. So, and if, if we needed another para, we'd have to, Ally would have to use her grant money that comes in.
What was the total again, please? That's one stipend and two and a half paras. Does anyone have questions? Julie?
Can you detail where the paras are from?
They're, they're all from special education. Okay? They are, the paras in special, the special education staff just in general is very fluid because kids' IEPs change and needs change. So right now, these three positions are vacant, so they're not from anywhere. That doesn't mean that we won't need them in September, but right now, today, we can cut them without impacting anyone.
Does anyone else have questions about the paras and the middle school leadership stipend? Questions? That would be a savings of $70,405. Are we feeling comfortable with that? Should we take a straw pull on that one? All right. How many people would support that cut? Show of hands? We go around the table? All right, that looks unanimous. All right, so Bob, we're at 2.85?
Is that including the art teacher?
Art teacher? No.
Okay, so 2.85 without having to cut the art teacher. Does anyone want to join in on, on something that they wanted to see? I mean, we, we were sort of vague last time. Julie?
Okay, I'm still hung up on this, Bob. So if we were less conservative on our tuition in money, because currently we get $178,000 from our non-resident students and the proposed budget is 45, so if we, so the revenue isn't worked in in advance. Okay.
That's just a heads up to the towns so they know what they, their portion they might be paying, but the amount we go out on for referendum is the total amount.
Okay, I thought revenue was worked in.
Well.
Yeah, I know, I'm, thanks.
Alan?
You know, this is my thing.
Yeah, I know. So let's talk about it. Let's get it out there.
Yeah, so this is what confuses me, and I guess I'm glad you brought this up, Julie, is that we always say that the tuition in revenues are separate from the budget, but they're actually not. They are estimated as part of our budget calculation and the budget that is voted on includes that and, and that, that usual 19, it doesn't.
Alan, can I just, the budget that goes to referendum is the gross budget. There's, there's no net budget that goes to the public.
Right, but what I'm saying is.
The net is what's billed to the towns. The town side is going to get a bill for the net number after the revenue.
Right.
You can make that number a million dollars. You can make a.
Right.
What I'm saying is, the only reason it's 45,000 is because I took a conservative number because not all of those people would necessarily come back. You could make, change the number, but it's not going to affect what goes to the public.
Yeah, I guess you're right, and that's the difference between net and the gross. The net is what, the net is what the public votes on, but our gross.
The public goes on the gross.
Gross?
Gross.
Is what the public votes on.
Could I, I think there's an easier way to explain this. If, if the, if the gross budget, without any of this netting out of tuition, if the gross budget is $100.
Yeah.
And, and tuition, the pub, you take a $100 budget to referendum.
Okay.
If the tuition comes in and it's $2.
Yeah.
You invoice the towns for 98.
Yep.
And that's how much they end up paying. The tuition in money is the money that they don't have to pay us out of the budget. It defers the amount they would otherwise pay.
No, yeah, but the problem is, is, and that's what I always thought happened, and we always talked about how revenue in addition to the net goes to the towns. But it doesn't. It's treated, it is used by the budget and is estimated in the gross budget.
Nope.
In other words, when we have $300,000 that comes in from tuition and revenue, that doesn't mean that the towns get 18 and 26 and 48% of $300,000 at the end of the year. Because when we talk about our budget surplus and we, we remit or we deposit 1% into the 1% fund, we're taking 1% of the whole budget and very often, the only way to do that is to take from the gross part.
That's all we're, the gross is, we're responsible, we, the regional school board can't exceed the gross appropriation voted on by the public.
But I thought you said the net is what we vote on, is what the public.
No, we vote on the gross, Alan.
You vote on the gross.
You need some math manipulative.
All right. So we vote on the gross, but if we are voting on the gross then, the gross has to, has to encompass the estimate for the tuition in amount.
No, no, that, the way that works is, we then bill the town for the net amount and, and you'll recall a few years ago, revenue did not come in to the level it was and it created a deficit in the fund balance, which technically the town had the obligation to pay us as opposed to us refunding a fund balance that we didn't have.
Must have been a while.
We carried it over to the second year, netted the two together so that we didn't impact the towns, okay?
Mm-hmm.
If you estimate that number too high, that means you're going to collect less money from the towns because that's what you're going to bill them on the net. The number doesn't come in, they're still responsible for the gross budget. It doesn't matter how you cut it, the public gave you an appropriation for the gross amount of money. My point is.
Okay.
If you do and try to come up with a wild big number in the revenue, it could create a hardship on the towns when you close your books.
If you don't make that number.
You got it. And, you know, and I don't think we're in a position to take that. They can certainly make any calculation they want if they believe they're going to get all these students back, but we don't have any guarantee of it.
There's no contractual commitment.
No.
Bring in those.
The only ones that we have is Sherman.
So, and so we can't budget against that.
And I, I budgeted conservatively for that reason.
Which, which, this last year, we had so much tuition. It was, it was great for the towns. They ended up having a credit above, beyond what we thought.
June, the fund balance will reflect that and they'll get it back.
Right. And so they were billed less for the last.
At the end of the accounting of it, they'll.
Right.
At the end of the accounting of it, they'll bill less.
Do you, are we good? Michael?
This, just maybe we can put under the heading of PR then. Is there ever any kind of a public announcement from either the town side or from our side about what, what that rebate was to the towns and what?
Absolutely, every year it is. It was, it's presented as the amount going back from the audited fund balance. The public, it's, it's in the minutes, it's everywhere. And you know, whether the press picks it up is really, you could give it to them, but if they publish it, that's fine.
I think that's a good point, though, Michael, like, we, we could, we could talk about it more. We could talk about it at finance when we see the final, because we, when we go over the audit, it's, you know, it's a book of a lot of, kind of, dry numbers, but highlighting the tuition.
I know, Michelle, you've been making a real effort to go to the boards of finance. That's the type of thing that I think we really need to highlight for them.
Right.
To say, you know, I know you're, you're, you're operating as if this was our gross budget, but with this money, the monies that we've collected, actually, this is what you paid.
Right, right, no, that's good, and, and actually, it's going to be really important as we move forward with AgSTEM, because that is also, that's gonna be a huge revenue, but we still have to go to referendum on the gross.
Right.
So that.
Confuse me, we don't go to referendum on the gross.
We do.
But look, look, look at page two, look at page two, right? See page two, expenditure summary? Total budget, 22, 237, 231, right? Right?
Yeah.
There's no revenue in there.
Right.
So that is, but.
The gross.
It's the gross. It's the gross.
I always think, I think, I think of gross.
Alan.
You take everything.
Alan.
All right.
Alan, compare page two to page 11 and 12. Page 11 and 12, you'll see how that gets in there and it figures out to what gets billed to the towns, but you're going to referendum on the 22, not the 20.
I don't think the gross is bigger than net regardless, in this case, gross is smaller than net. Yeah, because gross has revenue, it takes away from the net total.
No.
Net has revenue.
Maybe, maybe you're not sure about the, what that word means.
Gross is big, net is smaller, right? But in this case.
Which is the net.
Offset by revenue, which makes.
The net smaller, that's what we bill to the town.
The gross is what we need to operate.
Is the, is the gross, yes, yes. And the more we take in in revenue, the less we bill the town. We don't get to spend it. We just bill the town for less. And we could always give it to them and then they could give it back and pay us the gross, but that seems silly.
I think I'm doing pretty well for an English major.
Come on, I know you took advanced math. I think we should probably move on, though. Yeah, let's move on. Yes, Bob?
One, just one quick thing. Michael, to answer your question, since 2007, we returned $1,523,628 to the three towns through that end-of-the-year surplus through the fund balance. You can break it down by town if.
And, well, I don't necessarily need that, but I, but I would love to highlight that to the individual towns.
Sure.
You know, I would love for Roxbury to know how, how much less they actually paid.
You're aware.
That is, that is the key part, and we need to get the words around that. Right, 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 so we'll, we'll work.
Well, as Michelle said, when we get to the, when we open the doors for the AgSTEM program, this lesson's gonna be front and center.
Absolutely.
Absolutely, we're gonna have to really figure out how to explain this so that people are clear. And we have to start with making sure our board is clear.
I have a perfect training subject if I understand.
Yes, yes, I'll work on my manipulatives in my presentation.
I'm gonna echo Carolyn Dwyer's comment about, I have three points, but the first one is the superintendent's salary at $215,000, is that what we're gonna go with? Number two, and I've said this prior to my being on the board, I don't understand that with 89.3 teachers and there is a reduction in the paras from 31.8 to 29 paras, how we need eight literacy tutors? Is that full-time, how many hours is that equal? I just can't understand how, you know, the, and, and I was told that it was elementary levels that most of the tutors were for, but with a reduction in our school population, I can't understand how the teachers can't pick up some of the slack and why we need eight full-time tutors. And the third point is, on the March 19th Facilities Committee meeting, there was 20 items, funding considerations associated with the AgSTEM project. What is gonna pay for those? That, I don't see any of that in the budget. The, you know, some of them are small, some of them are quite large. The soccer field, the kiln relocation and move, data communications rack. Where's the money for that coming from?
So, just so I can be clear, these are things that have to happen because of AgSTEM but are not being paid for with, with the bond, okay?
They're, they're actually in a couple of different categories.
Okay.
Some of them are, are move-related stuff associated with, with AgSTEM. We're gonna have to move a few things around. We have reduced the cost of the temporary areas that we have to do, but some of that relates to that. Others are projects we had intended to have done as part of AgSTEM. For example, the second athletic field. That was originally in the AgSTEM budget because we had a displaced field. That got dropped when the state reduced the amount of money they were willing to fund. So there's, there's several items that John's referring to that were things we had hoped to do as part of AgSTEM but have been tossed out of, out of the budget as a result of the reduction. And so there you go, that, that's what that is. And, and that, of course, leaves aside, and I share Alan's concerns about the reductions, because that leaves aside the fact that we're gonna have some significant capital needs in the years ahead. I mean, even if, even if AgSTEM were to be wildly successful and pay for itself, you, you've still got capital needs in this building and the other buildings. I mean, this is the strategy. When we decided as a district, based on the vote of our citizens, that we would, you know, we would not undertake a certain configuration change, we bought into a long-term maintenance of buildings that are old. And they're expensive and they, they require things, and this building is old. And there it is. I mean, we, we've gotta take care of what we got and that's gonna increase the amount of outflow that's needed. The real problem with this budget, I suspect, is not so much that it's going up 3.9%. The real problem with this budget is that two, for two years in a row, when the music stopped, Roxbury was standing up, okay? And that's over a $1,100,000 increase to Roxbury over two years. And that's what they're complaining about is not sustainable, and I share their concern. It is not sustainable to have that large an increase. They went from 6,800,000, I think, to 7, to 7,900,000. That's a large increase for a town to absorb, two consecutive years getting hit. Part of the reason why that happens is because we had those low-budget years. And that put us in the position of, we, it all looked nice and happy, but it wasn't quite nice and happy because of the reallocations. Not much you can do about that real.
Actually, most of the reason that happened to them is because of the student population.
Exactly.
Because three years ago, Washington had a 400 and something thousand dollar increase, so it, it goes around, I mean, so, so, I, let's just not confuse the two. The, the increase, which was driven mostly by health insurance, is being bird, shouldered by Roxbury more than they're used to because of the increase in the percentage.
Well, no, no, that's not what happened, Michelle, see, that, that's, that's the simplistic view of it, because I've, I've had a long discussion with, with, you know, those of us who are on the board from Roxbury have had a long discussion with the selectmen and the, the Board of Finance people and whatnot there. And for them, if you were to just take the increase, the $600,000 increase, and make that disappear, you're still haven't solved Roxbury's problem, 'cause their, their, their share is still going up almost $400,000 when you take the entire two-point, if you take the entire 2.39% increase and, and get rid of it, they're still going up a significant amount of money. Because what, what their position is, is that we need to start looking under this, at the underlying budget, and give that a fair look. The transportation was one area where that should be. They want us to look at salaries, they want us to look at a variety of things. But I can tell you that it's, it's a hard problem to solve, but the problem is, when you get hit with that two years in a row, you know, it, it makes it very difficult to be supportive of the budget.
Yep, Alan?
Well, I, I just have to give a perspective on this, and I don't mean to seem, uh, seem unsympathetic, but that is kind of what happens. And Curtis Reed and I talk about this all the time, and Curtis is very straightforward with the people of Bridgewater whenever we have town meetings, especially in the budget season. He talks about the fact that for the last several years, Bridget, uh, Bridget, Bridgewater has been fortunate to have what he calls a windfall. And that's because our population has been declining more rapidly than other towns. That in and in itself is a problem. However, our, our Region 12 bill has been going down, and that, for a town budget, is great. And he says, "This is the time for us to make capital improvements. This is the time to, to make sure that our funds are healthy. This is the time to spin from our funds, because this will not last forever." And there will become a time that if we don't take care of things now, if we just drop the mil rate, hey, then, when the ball swings the other way and our Region 12 budget starts going up again, we will be unable to accomplish some of the things we can accomplish with the windfall we've had. So, we're always very conscious of the fact that it's a trade-off. We would rather have more students in the school system and a flourishing school system. We don't have to go through all this tuition-in business and all the hard work we've been doing to try to make the classes viable. We would rather have a full school. But we realize in the meantime that we are getting a financial benefit from it. The same thing for, for Roxbury. Roxbury had years where their population was going down and they had, you know, what could be called a windfall or a relief in their, in their part of the budget. At the moment, we're all declining, but there, and I don't know the exact figures, I'm sure that the Roxbury representatives know. The Roxbury either is declining slower or they happen to not be declining while Washington and Bridgewater are declining at the moment. And therefore, the, the numbers shift, so.
Actually, just, I just wanna say, 'cause I have it in front of me. It was, it was 2017, Roxbury's bill was 440,000 less than the year before. So actually, their bill, their, the 2018 budget, this year's budget, is less than $100,000 more than what they paid in 2017. So, so had they set that aside and weathered that?
Not, not set it aside, you can't really set it aside, but had they, and, and as I said, I don't mean in any way disparage or to, or to be unsympathetic, but I think what, what I think Roxbury, and, and I don't, I also don't mean to use euphemisms, I think what Barbara Henry and the Roxbury representatives should realize is that this is a cycle that is, is inevitable. And that, if not setting beside, realize that they did have years where they had a lower budget increase, and that doesn't mean that would always happen. And that there will be years when they will have a higher percentage of the budget increase. So that, I've been going by the face value of what Greg has been saying as far as there was a 500 last year and a 600 this year, 1.1 million. So I know it's been going up and down, but maybe there was a year in between where there was.
Not between, just the one prior to the 500 increase was a 440 decrease.
A 440 decrease. So that's the thing, is we have to realize we've, we've had, we're zigzagging on these things. And that, and I do worry, and as I said, I don't wanna feel like, I don't want anyone to think I'm trying not to be helpful to Barbara at the moment, but I do worry that the impact on our future as a board to manage increases might be handicapped by, by going too far to try to offset this for Roxbury.
Is this coming out of the Capital Improvement Fund? Is it coming out of some loans that we have to take? Is it, I just don't understand where the money is gonna come from, from projects that have to begin in the 2018, 2019 school year? Where is, is that gonna?
They sound like capital projects that we can decide whether they're eligible for the, the Capital Non-Recurring Fund. So those will be decisions we'll have to make moving forward, or we'll decide we have to hold on for a year. I, 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 I don't know, they just, they're not part of this operating budget.
Is there a possibility that'll run over?
What's the total of your list?
There's no, there's no dollar signs here.
All right, well, then I can't tell you if it's gonna be more than what we have. But we have some money set aside, we can prioritize the list, do the things that need to happen first, push off the ones that we can wait on for another year. Hopefully, we won't have another $500,000 increase on health insurance and we can look at, at funding some of those capital projects.
It sounds like this whole list has to be associated with the AgSTEM project. Has to be finalized.
I don't think, I don't think moving the kiln needs to be finalized for AgSTEM to happen.
Or the soccer field, I guess.
Yeah, but a, as Michelle pointed out, those are, they fall under the Capital Non-Recurring expenses, which means, you know, you don't move the, you don't move the soccer field every day or, or move a kiln, so that those can come extra-budgetary, they can become from, from reserve funds. There's, but there's a list of projects here that if we weren't doing AgSTEM, wouldn't need to be done. We wouldn't need to displace the kiln, the kiln if we didn't need the space.
Right.
So, I'm not sure, my opinion is that projects like that, that should be factored into the cost of the AgSTEM project.
Agreed.
Right? I mean, it, it's different than saying, oh, well, we need to redo the libraries, so why don't we kinda throw it in while we've got some money? That, I think, is completely out of bounds. But if we have to move something to make room for those buildings, whether it's inside or outside, it's a consequence of that program, then I think it's a legitimate cost to, to pursuing that project. Now, maybe this isn't the right place to have that discussion, Greg?
Well, yeah, I, I was just gonna add one thing to it. One of the things we discovered in our meeting with DAS is that some of the costs that we're gonna have associated with this, for example, we have some rooftop units that have to be relocated because we've got a rooftop unit that serves that entire end of the building and it's now going to have to serve just the very little piece of the end of the building. We were advised by DAS that a lot of those costs may be eligible for reimbursement at 80%. So.
So we can defer this conversation?
We can defer this conversation because we might end up solving that problem, depending on how much it expands. We, we obviously can't exceed the amount they're willing to fund, but if we get a few costs like that and we keep our budget within constraints, we may be able to recover some of that cost.
So, so John?
Quite a bit.
Are you, are you, is that acceptable, will you defer that?
Obviously, the, you know, so that implies that we are authorized to spend up to 39 million and anything over the 32 million reimbursable is, is gonna get added on to that.
I would disagree with the characterization that we're gonna move a kiln and all of a sudden, we're gonna spend $10 million more. I mean, so let's, please, it's, it's bad enough with, with people making up facts and then running with them. We've got a hard enough job as a board to deal with the reality of, of this district. We don't need to be causing ourselves more pain, so I'm, just, let's use the right numbers and let's not inflame things. Yes, it's going to add to the, to, to the bill, but until Greg and his team are finished with the project, we don't know if it's, if it's, sorry, Alan, but we don't know if this is gonna be a net increase or nothing, right? So I don't wanna jump.
Right, we don't even have.
I don't think we should be jumping to conclusions yet, because Greg may say, guess what, good news, I saved $100,000 over here because we, because we did something really smart and that then gave us the ability to do these 10 things that were on our list. Isn't that great? And we would say yes.
And if the state reimburses it?
And if the state reimburses it, it's even more reason to not jump too quickly.
Right.
When we can, when we can get reimbursement, so.
So this does not seem like a conversation for tonight as we're, as we're looking at our operating budget. What we need to, we need to set a number. We, we need to set it tonight or we need to hold a special meeting, so I would like to carry forward. I did just wanna mention the superintendent's salary, 'cause that came up last time and it was on John's list of three things. There was also an article in the Waterbury Republican about superintendent salaries in Litchfield County just last week, and it sort of outlined all the different superintendents. But what was very interesting about the article, it says, "Shopping for a superintendent. Boards learn, boards learn a good superintendent is hard to find." The gist of this article is really about how usually, in order to, to, to. The gist of this article is really about how, usually, in order to get a candidate pool that includes experienced superintendents, you're pulling from other places, and in order for you to be able to do that, you need to be offering more. So it's a, it's a, it's a challenge. They talked to all these different districts about what they were paying their superintendent. You know, they went out looking to hire and found they weren't getting any applicants until they increased the salary to comparable of the local area. So while I could support cutting some in the budget from what we have for the superintendent salary, I would just caution about cutting it too much. We don't want to hurt the pool, we don't want to take ourselves out of the local market. So that would, that's what I, does anyone want to propose something there?
Let me, one comment?
Yeah?
Just to be clear, the line item that's in the budget is salary and the annuity. So it's not just salary. There was a question asked earlier about that, so I want to make sure we're all on the same, we're all on the same page of what that line item is and isn't, before we finish.
Lisa?
So how does our salary compare with the region, other schools in the region comparable to ours?
Well, there aren't that many schools comparable to ours in that we're on the small side, you know, small, but if you look at the whole northwest corner, we're, we are at the top, we're not the highest, but we're close. But I think there's possibly some wiggle room. So what is, our total right now is two...
215, I believe.
Okay. So for example, if we want, if we took 20,000 out of that line item, that would bring us, we'd still be close to the top, but a little closer to some of our neighbors. I mean, it's, they didn't do a chart, it's sort of all buried in the text here, but there's a lot of 180s and 190s out there. Greg?
I don't see how you can adjust the superintendent's salary in the budget. We're in the midst of doing a search. We don't even know what's out there, we don't know the level of experience of people that are coming in. The superintendent's salary is directly attributable to the level of experience that the person has. Yes, if you brought in someone extremely junior, first superintendent job, you could cut that number down. But if you decide that the one you really need, the one you want to hire, is a fairly experienced person, you're not going to be able to do that. And all you're going to do is start the budget with a hole in a place where we don't even know what that number ought to be until we are further along in the search process. So I would, I don't think that's quite the place we need to look to cut. I'm not quite sure where we need to go from here, but I think the budget is still too high, and I think we need to cut some more out of it.
I suppose not there. Okay, so we've had the proposal of a .6 of a teacher and some of the superintendent's salary line. Michael?
I disagree with Greg. I think that, you know, based on the research that you did, Michelle, it sounds like we'll still be competitive. You didn't say that we'd be at the bottom of the range, or even in the middle of the range, that with that $20,000 cut, we'd still be at the high end of the superintendent's salary package range. Is that correct?
Um, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we would, we would still, I think, I personally think we would still be competitive. And I also want to just throw out here that it does not, we are not bound by that, it's a budget. If, for some reason, we need $5,000 more for the perfect candidate, we just have to cut somewhere else. But it's, it's, you know, as we're looking in all of our pockets of places we could possibly save, that's...
I think it seems like a reasonable place to start, and don't forget that if we do have a good candidate, and one of the strategies we can offer is, when we're negotiating, is we could say, you know, after a year, we'll look at your salary package again.
Right. Yeah, we could put in some measurable outcomes, like AgStem enrollment. Julie?
I agree, I think, with Mike and John on cutting the superintendent's salary back to a competitive rate. A lot of my reasoning for that is that it will get us a lot of PR. It is something that a lot of residents in this region have glommed onto, they've read the surveys, they know we're the top, they know we're a good school district to work in, we have not a lot of safety or discipline or really bad things going on here, so it's perceived as a desirable place to work. And if we can say to our residents that we cut $25,000 from the superintendent's salary, it will be huge into getting this budget passed.
I know, I was going to say, I said 20, she said 25. Pete?
Boy, this sounds, it sounds like, it sounds like the board's in panic mode. One selectman speaks and all of a sudden thousands appear on the table. I've been through this for 30 years, and nothing's changed. It is what it is. I wouldn't cut a dime out of the superintendent's salary until we hear from the gentleman who's going to speak to us tonight. You can always postpone this meeting or carry this meeting on later, but maybe we should listen to the gentleman we hired, and what his opinion is on what he sees at the moment. And the cheaper you pay someone, the cheaper you get. So, I'm not anti or pro the concept, but I think we should wait and see. You sound, I mean, this sounds so similar to the past. One person speaks, and everybody all of a sudden drops the budget, 100 grand, 200 grand, 300 grand, it's like you're in a state of panic. I mean, I don't get it. And I'm a guy who doesn't like high budgets, but this is ridiculous. We can stand here, we can sit here and nickel-dime this budget, we can find 100 here, 200 here, 1,000 here, 5,000 here, I mean, it's ludicrous.
Well, that's kind of our job, Pete.
Oh, you got to stop it at some point. You sound like a bunch of phonies. Why did the budget appeal like this in the first place? You should have said to the superintendent, "We want a 2% budget. Give us a 2% budget increase," then you wouldn't have to sit there and do this.
Well, no, because we would then ask the questions, "Well, what did you cut?" So, either way, you want to back-end the questions or front-end the questions, either way, we're going to want to know what was included and what wasn't. And that's the way we've done it for the, whatever, 13 years I've been here. So, we'll stop the conversation when we're finished, and we feel that we're at a number that we're happy with.
I think Julie had a question.
Julie out a question?
Well, I was just thinking about your comments, Pete, and that is, I think our job is to have our pulse on what the towns are thinking. And I can't speak for Roxbury, Washington, because I don't hang out there, but I do hang out in my own town, and I know 4% isn't going to pass, and I think we're doing a prudent good job at looking what voters, what they're thinking and what they want, and I feel like that's our job.
Thank you.
Michelle, if I can?
Yeah?
So, just keeping a tally here...
Yep.
And not including the art teacher.
Correct.
So, on the things we talked about, and this last one, the 20% reduction, that's a net reduction so far of 261,000 off the budget.
That includes what, on the superintendent?
So that includes the capital that was voted on at the last meeting, less the buses, less the, I mean, less the 20K in reduction of the superintendent's salary, and the powers at 70.4. That's a total of, should be 261. And that's a net, so that would result in a budget increase of 2.75%.
All right, so, and everything that you...
Bob, do you agree with that? 2.75?
Did I miss something, Bob?
I don't mean to...
We were at 2.85, we were at 2.85...
He's going to validate my number.
Until the, until the 20,000 superintendent. So, and that was, that one, we didn't take a straw poll on yet. Just so you know. We could do that and move on and see if there's anything else.
Yeah, well, Bob's checking the numbers, maybe, yeah.
All right. So, can we see a show of hands of how many people would support the $20,000 reduction in the superintendent's salary line? All right, it's not unanimous, but it's a majority. So, that looks like that would carry. So that, Bob will be close to figuring out, is...
For the buses and the 70,000 vacant positions was 240,491. We had the art issue of 38...
Yeah, but we don't add that, take that out.
Sorry. 20,000 is now 260,491.
Is that what you had, Anthony?
Yeah, I rounded up to 261, so...
Okay.
And the percentage would be 2.76.
76.
If I got the power number in there right. Yeah, I didn't go to the two decimal places, so Bob will...
Let you stay in the chair.
I could stay, I could stay. Thank you, I think. So, John?
What do you got, Bob? I just wanted to make sure.
And could the elementary principals comment on the literacy tutors? The need for eight?
I think we should...
Yeah, no, you're right, John, that was your third thing we didn't...
Whoever feels prepared to just explain, because we've talked about that in the past, it's been a good question, but to remind us of what exactly, there works, there's, well, they'll explain.
Pretty much, yeah, the...
That's not what he's talking about now. Literacy tutors? That's one tutor at WPS?
Right, can I, I'll let you know, right now, currently, Burnham has two tutors, Booth Free has two, Washington Primary has four, and Burnham has two at assistants, one at Booth Free, and two at WPS.
So what I did was, before we decided we were going to stop, this is what people currently have now, this is the staff of teachers, ratio of students to teachers, I put the teachers in the inventory, and this is the support staff, what they're talking about right now. With the new numbers, these are now the ratio of teachers to students, very similar.
So, could, I just, could somebody explain, my understanding is, it was the SRBI, right, the research-based intervention or whatever, that really brought the tutors in, it was a state requirement, but that was a while ago, and we haven't talked about it in a while. Does anyone feel...
It seems like that number of eight tutors has been there before the multiple grades, though.
Oh, no, we've cut it. We cut, we cut .5, I think, a year or two ago. Greg? Greg? Alan?
Well, I...
Oh, you weren't finished?
I wasn't finished.
Oh, sorry.
Well, I mean, clearly there was a time before we had them that we got along, so what would it mean if we eliminated the program entirely? Would that result in a total stagnation of the elementary school and scores through the floor? I mean, what would happen if we eliminated those positions? Well, I mean, how much smaller do we have to get before the teacher can handle a small group? I mean, you've got small group classes in these schools. I mean, you really do. I mean, you've got classes that are small. And the question is, if you've got a teacher with eight or 10 kids in a classroom, and they can't give those eight or 10 kids, you know, individualized attention, the question is, is how much does another person help? You know, the difficulty we've got is, is people are sitting out there, looking at the size of our classrooms and the number of kids in them, and they're saying, "How have you got to spend all this much money to do it?" And that's what you're getting out there. So I'm just telling you that we've got to be able to answer those questions. I'm not suggesting that you should eliminate the program. What I'm suggesting is, until we can justify it, maybe we ought to consider that. I want to tell you.
Alan?
Okay, now I have two things to say. In answer to that, I think that rather than, you know, board members, we are somewhat knowledgeable about the school system, and we're somewhat knowledgeable about the public. And I think our position as board members is not to simply channel the, all right, I'll say it, the ignorance of the public, and I'm not calling them ignorant, I'm saying they are not ignorant, they are ignorant of the inner workings and necessities of the school system in this kind of area. There's probably a better word, but I can't think of it. Uninformed, let's say, is a more polite word. Uninformed, they're not informed. So what I like about what you said, Greg, is you posited this, I thought and I hoped is kind of a devil's advocacy, that if you don't know, and if we don't know exactly what the value is of these literacy and math tutors, then that reflects a, an opinion of an uninformed electorate who would also say, "What are these for?" So, as opposed to saying, you know, following that, we need to learn from our staff and our principals exactly how vital these are, so that we can turn that back to our budget voters. Rather than take the idea of, "Well, we could do without it, we'll manage," because, you know, frankly, we've had, for a long time, very high-performing elementary schools. And we have, you know, we've always had work to do in the middle and high school, and we're improving there, but we've always had excellent elementary schools. And I think part of that is because, obviously, the foundational work towards building, the beginning years of a child's education has to do with some of these things, which might be not easily comprehended by your average public, who thinks of one room, one teacher, and here we go. There's an awful lot of support that goes into that, that we, if we are not able, as it is now, to stand behind and bolster with our own presence, then we need to educate ourselves a little better. And I think I would rather cut the .6 FTE art teacher than endanger the literacy tutors.
I just want to add to that, that I wanted there to be discussion about the tutors for that very reason, so that we can explain to the public why they're important. But that was not the next item prioritized by our administration. So if we feel that we need to look other places, I would like to hear where they prioritized the cuts. So, do we have...
There's one thing I did want to say, though, Michelle, in response to what Alan said, and that is that I don't think it's appropriate to say that, I mean, the public may not attend every one of these meetings, but to say that they're uninformed or unintelligent about something like that is not correct. If we don't know why this program is important, and we don't know what the priority of the program is, then the ones who are uninformed are us. And so I think, I think that's what you were trying to say, but I just want to make sure that we're not uninformed, and that we look at every program, and because what they're asking us to do, is they're asking us to go back to square one. No one would build a school system like we've built it in this state. Okay? But we got to live with what we've got. But what they're saying is, go back and look beyond just the increases for this year. Go back and look at your basic budget, and figure out why you've got so many people. And it could be that educational standards have changed, and things we have to do changed, and we've had state, you know, the state has not supported, they've given us mandates that are unfunded. And that may be part of it. But that doesn't mean that we, that in this day and age, we don't have to go back and take a look at first principles, and go through that entire budget, and look at everything, and say, "Why do we have this? How badly do we need that? If it's a choice between A, B, C, and D, which one do you want? If we have to lose one, we got to lose one." But that's the way you got to look at it, if you're ever going to get this budget down to some level.
Right. Pete?
Don't take this personal, but I think this is pretty stupid. Everybody here is determining what the number should be for the budget. If you really have a number that you want the budget to be after talking to your selectmen, go to Pat Consiglio and say, "Pat, we need a 2% budget. We can't pass anything else. Selectmen aren't going to support it, we don't think our taxpayers will support it." To sit here and us to determine what the number is that should be in the budget is ludicrous. That's what you have the staff for. They go to the superintendent, they sit with the superintendent, they determine what they need, how much money it's going to cost, the superintendent brings it to us, and not because she's looking to jack the budget up, she's doing it as conservatively as possible because we've led her to believe that. We're sitting here for over an hour determining, we're like running the system. I mean, it's... I mean, it's ludicrous. I've been through this since 1985, '86. Nothing's changed. None of you have changed. You're like adjunct to your selectmen. Your selectmen work through you to the superintendent and the staff. It is absolutely ludicrous. I mean, this isn't even how you run anything.
Pete, thank you. We got...
I hope you got it, because it doesn't sound like you got it.
Well, no, I heard you. It doesn't necessarily mean I agree with you. Michael?
I just have a quick question for the principals. First off, you know, I strongly believe in literacy teachers. I think they're incredibly important, and wholesale dismantling of the program would, I think, be a disaster. But I do have a question for you in terms of the number of students that the individual teachers are serving. Are they doing one-on-one coaching, or are they doing small-group coaching? Thanks for clarifying that, because I think when people hear tutoring, they think it's one-on-one.
Thank you. Jim?
Yeah, Pat, I'm sorry. You said on the literacy tutors, there were two at Burnham, two at Booth Free, and four at Washington Primary. Then the ed assistants, what were the numbers on that?
Uh, one second. Ed assistants currently, this year, there are two at Burnham, one at Booth Free, and two at WPS.
Can you tell us briefly what the difference is between a literacy tutor and an ed assistant?
An ed assistant, from my knowledge, and they can also chime in, is usually not someone who is certified. It's someone who works in the classroom assisting with teaching and the teacher, where a literacy tutor is, for the most part, a certified person who's working directly with students.
What line item is that? Where do they fall? Oh, 10 minutes to a break. The ed assistants that you were just talking about, they're not in the 119 tutors line? So, are they under professional line? While you're looking for it, I just wanted to point out, too, that we get a lot for the dollars we spend on those tutors. That's not a huge savings, but a huge value. Yeah, Bob? Paris? Okay. Okay. Thank you. All right. We've spoken for a while about the tutors. That was not a priority of the administration.
Follow-up, one more thing on the tutors?
All right, last thing.
I never meant to imply that we should, you know, eliminate the total program. Would it be possible to eliminate one for a year and see how things go? I mean, especially with the population in the schools declining. And I think it's, you know, it's... Someone could pick up the slack, possibly.
I still go with the priorities of the administration. They felt more comfortable looking other places that would not affect the program we offer. So, if I want to stay educated, that might be an area to look in the future. But in the list, the prior... Things that the administration prioritized, tutors were not the next, not at the top to be cut because of the impact on the educational program. So, I mean, we've cut quite a few things. We've chosen not to incorporate, at this point in time, the .6 art teacher. We did not take a straw poll on that. We could if we wanted, but we are at 2.76. Do we want to hear one more suggestion, or...
I'd like to hear all the suggestions, every one they've got. I mean, why should we say one more?
Well...
Let's listen to them all, and we can prioritize and decide which ones we want to do something about, which ones we don't.
I know.
I know, but that's what we signed up for. We're here to make a decision. It's important.
I agree. I mean, I hear what you're saying. I just think that... I mean, we've made some significant cuts that we're going to hear about. So, you know, let's just proceed with caution. Bob, did you want to add something? Okay, excellent. All right, Pat, in your list of priorities? What was... Yep, what was next? All right, we got a five-minute warning. Do we want to take... One more? Okay, one more, and we'll mull it over while we take a bathroom break.
Okay. Next on the list was the Burnham library clerk. We currently share staff across Burnham and Booth quite regularly. And this came up at the beginning of the year because the library clerk had retired. But at that point, we didn't want to reduce the position. So, Kathy could not get one person to do the job, and there's two sisters doing the job. And our recommendation is to cut that position at Burnham, share with Booth Free, and that would save $16,249.
Okay, are there questions about the library clerk at Burnham? Alan?
Yeah, I remember we did go through this in the fall upon the retirement. We determined after an awful lot of work that it was really, you know, programmatically dangerous as far as having the library staffed for walk-ins and for reference and for research and things like that. And I don't really think we should revisit it now just because we have to try to save $16,000. I think the way it was worked was that there was an overlap that was handled that really made it only a minor hours' reduction from what it had been before, from the new way it was being handled as far as part timing. But I don't really want to... That was a whole big deal as to the necessity of having a staffed library full-time, that I don't really think we should revisit again if we have other opportunities to look at afresh.
Yeah, we did go into that in depth, and we saw a lot of statistics. It's not a huge savings, so I don't know if that's the...
You have the next one?
Yeah. Why don't you give us the next one?
Okay, the next one was the $24,000 that is in the budget for public relations, the outside service. If you recall, we had hired, the board had hired Doug Clement for six months at $12,000. We are no longer working with him, but we did not remove the money from next year's budget.
Do people have questions about the money that we allocated for the PR person? Julie?
Is the plan, is this where the money will come to begin to promote AgSTEM? Or is that a different pot of money?
That's a good question.
Okay, well, if it is, then I would suggest that we not cut that. I don't think I need to explain why.
All right, so... But that's a good point, because even though it may not be allocated the same way it has been this year, it's still there, you know, to be used for... Right, as a light on them. So, whether we're talking about that contract specifically, or, I don't know, printing costs for the director to oversee or something, advertising, I don't know. So, okay, that doesn't seem very popular. Pat, what's next?
The... We do have in this year's money as a new program, the Z-Space technology. That is the virtual reality technology. If you recall, we were going to put it in all three schools, in the elementary and at the high school.
Next.
And that is $21,995.
Anthony?
Yeah, instead of cutting that, I have a related question. Is we have about $100,000, of which that is 21, right, in the technology space? If I remember, the program cuts the capital technology.
Are you talking about improvements, program improvements?
Yeah, there's...
Page nine?
Right, there's 92 that we're adding.
And some of that is the Z-Space that we're talking about, right?
No, I think the Z-Space...
Yeah, it's in the box.
Oh, yes, the Z-Space is, yes, 16, yes.
So, I mean, the place that I would start with is whether or not we can delay a refresh of the Chromebooks and put it off for a year.
Okay, you have to, must pause.
All right, sorry.
Yeah, we're going to have to take a break.
Recession?
Hold that thought, and let's come right back after this commercial break.
And we'll come back to right to there. All right?
Greg wanted that a while ago, remember?
All right. Are we back? Yeah, enough of us. All right. So, we were talking about, Karen, technology refresh. What, when... Yeah, talk about them, Chromebooks and then the MacBooks.
Technology refresh. The reason why, and I will tell you the reason that I still want to do Z-Space, be the item that would be in the cut if we had to make the cut. It would not impact us because it's new. So, we could delay a year doing the pilot without impacting our refresh program. So, the Chromebooks, we don't have a choice. We have to do the Chromebooks because they're going end in life, which means at that point, after June of this year, we have many Chromebooks that will no longer be able to do S- test.
That's right.
And one of our primary reasons for having the Chromebooks once one is the ability to be able to do the Chromebooks, or the S- test. So, that is the one that cannot be touched. The laptops, again, we could remove the staff laptops as part of the recycling program, but then what's going to happen is it's going to catch up to us next year. So, when you start to interfere with the refresh cycle...
Oh, no.
Then you're going to have a problem, or you're going to have a big problem. Whereas with Z-Space, we could delay it for a year. Just saying, that was my, was the choice. It would be the least hurtful of the program.
I'd prefer not to delay Z-Space, and I would be okay with the deferral of the MacBooks for a year.
Is that the 28,881 item?
I don't know. Is it the whole thing, Karen?
If you're giving me a replacement cycle, what I would select, if you're giving me the choice of which, I would keep the teacher laptops, and I would delay for a year the digital media lab. There's two.
The digital media lab...
Those are the MacBooks, right?
The IMAX.
IMAX.
Apple computers and desktops, 28. Okay, the 28,881. Can I ask a question about that? Because I remember as we were kind of touring around, I think our ele... So, this is for up at the high school, middle high school? But some of our elementaries have been recently...
All of them.
Right.
So, what we have is a replacement cycle, and we've already cycled through the elementary schools. So, all of the elementary school labs have been replaced. What was next was to replace the digital media lab here, which is actually using second-generation lab of IMAX that was removed from the elementary school. So, we created a Mac lab here for briefcase, out of computers that were in the elementary.
Which is what I was going to say... I know, I was going to suggest we do that again, just because I'm wondering if the elementary, if the computers that we have... Oh, but they were already once in in the elementary. I was just going to say, could, do they have the capability to do? Because I would, one would imagine that what the middle high schoolers use them for might require more than what our elementary needs. So, but I guess that's, I don't know. Alan?
This is my same caution, is that it's not a cut, it's a deferral. And if we defer, then it'll only be that same amount next year that we will not be able to escape from. And who knows what kind of budget percentage we'll be looking at next year?
It'll actually be double. Right? I mean...
Yeah, I think, I think... Next?
Did anyone else have questions about... Jim?
I was just going to say, I wouldn't support moving any of them. This is not the place to cut, in my estimation.
I agree. Yeah, yeah. Well, technology is what we're really trying to promote, and, yeah, that seems to kind of shoot ourselves in the foot, in my mind. All right, so...
At this time, I'm really not prepared to share other reductions. I really have to sit with the staff.
All right. So, we're currently at 2.76, is that correct? We've had several suggestions from the superintendent. I have not taken a straw poll on any of them. It was the library clerk, the PR, the .6 teacher.
No, it doesn't include the .6 art teacher.
No, no, no. I'm saying I haven't taken a poll on those three. We just sort of moved on because there didn't seem to be a lot of support for that. I don't know. Do we have a motion? Does somebody want to...
Can I ask one more question about one more line item?
Sure. John?
Page 14, 13... Excuse me, page four of 13. Under professional services, staff, pupil services, outside hired, there's an increase of 55,000.
Can you look all the way, look all the way to the left? Do you see all the numbers? Give me some numbers.
001-953-2100, 2,000, 212E.
Okay, I see it. Yeah? What's your question?
Why is there an increase of 55,000 on that line?
Student need that will increase from a partial day to a full day student need.
And this is in, this is special and...
Yes, special education students going from a partial day to a full day. They're requiring services now for a full day.
Okay, so, but...
It's a good question.
Halftime went up 55,000?
It's a specialized professional medical professional.
So, what is that total salary, then?
So, it's contracted. It's an outside contracted medical professional.
So, it's not a salary, then? It's a contract fee?
Contract rate.
Okay, so, but that rate is larger than...
It's not, that's not all of it. I mean, my OT and ETS costs go up, it's a smidgen of that.
Okay.
55,000, my OT and contracted ETS costs go up a little bit each year, but the bulk of that cost is the professional that needs to now for a full day, contracted full day.
Thanks.
The nature of the professional? A nurse, thank you.
Can we, can we do the calculations with the... I know we haven't done a straw poll on it. I don't know whether you want to do that first, but if we could do the calculations of subtracting the .6 FTE art teacher, which personally I thought was the most palatable of the cuts that have come up, and see where that brings us down to in both dollar terms and in a final percentage increase?
All right, that was a savings of $38,558. So, if Bob wants to...
Two, 2.58 percent.
No, that can't be. We're already at 2.76.
Yeah, and you put 38 back in there, take 38.5 out, and we're down to 2.58 percent increase.
Or 2.58, okay.
I do, I do. I assume...
That kind of guy.
I assume we'd be going, doing this.
While Bob's double-checking that, Greg, you have a question?
We spend a lot of money on technology, and I think it's good that we do. And one of the things we talked about many, many years ago was one day we would have everything in our technology. We'd be teaching digitally. And yet, here we are with $34,000 in textbooks this year. I don't know if any of those can be deferred. And yet, here we are with $34,000 in textbooks this year, I don't know if any of those can be deferred. We probably spend at least that much in paper. This place is awash in paper. When is the technology going to end, this paper mill that we've got here in this school, between textbooks and paper? When is that gonna end? I don't know why anyone still, I don't know why anyone still uses textbooks. I honestly don't understand why. Why do we use textbooks? What, what, if every kid has one of these, we no longer have to look at the issue of, what are we gonna do about the kids not having access? They all have one of these. Why aren't the textbooks on these? And be paying for electronic textbooks rather than paper ones? So, I guess we don't have an answer for that.
I was gonna say, can we ask somebody, 'cause you know, I just overheard Jen say that the AP math book, is that what you're saying, is cyclical, is, is enormous? And, you know, we, we, we get through books, you know, on PDF now, you know, is, is there a reason? Is, are we held hostage by HBR or something, or?
Or HPJ.
Class sets of typical books and also by electronic versions, which is just on your own. Research shows that the tactile experience of holding a book is different than reading it on a computer. And, and we can disagree about that, but we're trying to do what research shows us to do. We have, we have lowered the amount of books that we buy, and we have increased the amount of electronic subscriptions that we buy, there's no question about that. But to absolutely eliminate books, and I have to say, I don't agree with it, I'm sure nobody cares, but research does bear that out.
Well, I don't necessarily mean eliminate them all, like in the library, but just as far as these heavy textbooks.
I was talking about textbooks, I wasn't.
Yeah, oh, yeah. You know, the heavy textbooks, you know, I'm really impressed by how great the book, the backpack is for building lumbar, lumbar strength in children. Right, right. So, you know, my, my seventh grader is like, it's pretty impressive when I help him out of the car, like, holy cow, you know? So, that would be, you know, not only that kinda thing, but, you know, the tactile experience, I'm sure that, I was teasing people in Bridgewater about this, who were like complaining about a lot of this kinda digital thing. Yes, I'm sure the tactile experience of going like this to read was, was really missed when we had to learn how to do it like this. But it's just adaptive, right? You know? Is there any way that, that aside, even if the research does point to that, that there is a way of, of at least lessening some of the heavy textbooks, which are probably the most expensive anyway?
There's the heavy textbooks that we're talking about, the math books, the history books.
And then the calculus books and the psychology books and the.
Over much longer the time because history does tend to.
Right. But, but as, as Greg puts it out, there's still, there's still a budget for certain textbooks this year. Is there a way of?
Well, there's a budget for certain textbooks because we're adding courses that require very expensive specialized textbooks. You know, when you have APs and community courses and you want more variety, and, and I agree, I think those were great suggestions for us, and I'm glad to take, I'm glad to take the education coming up on them. But they're not cheap suggestions.
Because there's still a cost to the digital textbook, obviously, which is.
Yeah, absolutely.
Potentially, because we're dealing with subject matter, close to the cost.
There, there, I mean, think about the cost of a Kindle book and the cost of a regular book that you see on Amazon. It's not all that, much less.
Yeah, and especially when we're dealing with intellectual property of textbook, we're probably dealing with something similar to that. However, are these, are these subscriptions? Because they don't wear out, so they don't have to be replaced cyclically. Oh, so you.
Were you the author of a digital book, would you not want it to be a subscription?
Well, no, but I mean, if it's, if the hardbound book, you, you have to replace it because it wears out, right? Or new additions, but the digital book doesn't have to be replaced, but they've built that in so that, all right. Is that your answer, Greg? It's mine sadly enough.
Well, I, I mean, I just, I'm looking at all these textbooks that are on the order sheet here. I'm seeing one in English. I mean, what in God's name in English is changed that requires a new textbook?
A new course.
A new course? In what?
AP Language and Comp.
And you need a textbook for AP Language and Comp? I mean, I took a lot of courses in English, philosophy, political science, many courses in, at university level. And I didn't have textbooks in any of them but the science, but the science courses. So, the question is, why do we need these textbooks? What do they provide that primary sources wouldn't, and those primary sources would last forever?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, it sounds like we're getting in the weeds here. The point, yeah, it sounds like the point's been made.
Ask a question.
And, wow, it's a legitimate question, and I think every, and it's, I know in the workshops, we talked about technology, we talked about digital, you know, subscriptions versus the paper. So, these conversations do happen. And, and I think it's a perennial conversation, because every year, the economics may change on us, depending upon what the mix is and what the market's doing, Alan, and, you know, what revenue models people are choosing to work with, et cetera, et cetera. So, I think the point's been note, been noted, but I think we should move on.
I agree. Jim?
I'd like to make a motion. Okay, so we've already decreased the capital 56,700, is that right? All right.
Yes.
So, I'd like to make a motion to decrease the budget by decreasing the two budgets, the two buses has been discussed by our business manager. To reduce two and a half pairs for the special ed budget. The middle school stipend for the project team leader. The superintendent's salary by $20,000. And that's it. I try bring, understand brings us to approximately seven, 2.76%. No, I, that's not in my motion. I'm not in favor of removing the art teacher. So, that's my motion.
Jim, did, thank you, excuse me, did you say that the reduction in the superintendent's salary?
Yes.
Okay.
So, so Jim's motion brings us to the 2.76, it does not cut the teacher.
Correct. All right, so we have a, we have a second.
We have a second, Jen seconded.
Any further discussion? Sorry, Michelle, if you wanna finish.
Go ahead. I'm only wondering if we wanna take that straw poll in the interim, so that we would know where, if it goes up or down, where it would go.
That's fine.
Does that make sense?
That's what you want to do.
Yeah, so, so, so if, if the teacher were to be added, the .6 art teacher, negative 38.
I'm, I'm sorry, to be added?
Uh, to the, to the, to the, added to the cuts.
Added to the list.
Sorry.
It's a gross net problem.
It's a .4, a .4 reduction.
No, the .4 was already reduced.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The .6 is being.
You're right.
Yes, which would bring it to one FTE art teacher, a total, over, over, for this entire budget.
That would bring the budget down to 2.58%.
2.58, how many people feel that they would support that? This is just a straw poll. Okay, so we've got four. Okay, so, are there, are there any other comments or questions on Jim's motion?
Could you repeat the motion?
I guess I would just feel that of all of these cuts, Kim reassured us that the art teacher was, was feasible. And even though I was concerned that we'd have to add one back as things progressed, I was thinking that 2.58 is closer to 2.5 than 2.7, and it might make a more of a dent when we're trying to be political about this and getting this budget passed, that's all.
I guess I would only comment that, while I hear what you're, you're saying, I, I don't, I wanna also think about the, the program, and while we can still offer all those classes, it will make scheduling a little more difficult. So, I wanna think about the program, not over politics, but I, in, that's, that's what I'm thinking about. Michael?
I think what convinced me was Kim's reassurances that there would not be a programmatic cut and that we would still have reasonable class sizes. If she had said that we're, we're looking at 30, I would have balked, but 22, I think is a reasonable number.
Okay. Are there any other comments or questions?
Sorry, Michelle.
Did you really want me to repeat it, Peter?
Yes, would you please?
I, the motion was to reduce the budget by eliminating two buses as outlined by our business manager. To reduce two and a half paralegals in the special ed budget.
Not paralegals.
A pair of professionals, I'm sorry. Pairs, I have. To reduce the, to eliminate the middle school project team leader stipend. To reduce the superintendent's salary $20,000. That's it.
Which brings us?
The 2.76.
2.76.
What I've been told.
Okay. Any further discussion? Greg, I see your hand up.
Yeah, I, I'm gonna vote against this because I, I think the reduction of the superintendent's salary is ill-advised. And I don't think it goes far enough in reducing other costs, and I don't think there's any chance we are ever gonna get into this budget, look at the line items and challenge them the way we should. And as a result, we're going to have money just piled up there that we never can get at. And, and as a result, we'll have to make program cuts, which is what I don't wanna do. But I think there's, there's money in that budget that could be gotten at if we could ever ask questions as to why it's in there and what it's for and why we're doing it. And so, I'm gonna vote against this. I don't think it goes far enough.
Any other comments or questions?
All right. All those in favor, the motion as Jim described, please raise your hand. All those opposed? Sorry, put your hand, all those in favor, put your hand, please put your hands back up. All right. You good, sir?
Are you all set?
No.
One, two, three. So, we're seven in favor. All those against, raise your hand. Pete, vote once, please.
Thanks, Dan.
Nice try. And all those abstained? None? Okay, the motion passes. All right, the motion passes to reduce the budget to a net increase of 2.76 from last year's base, as described by, by Jim. Do I, should I repeat it? Or do you have it? Thank you. Okay, and the next step now is we go to, well, not on this agenda, but as it relates to the budget, the next step is what?
I believe it's April 9th, it's the public hearing on the budget. Is that correct?
District budget hearing.
District budget hearings. That's at 7 o'clock, so it's not an early meeting, and we, we announce, it's like an announcement of this. And there's usually a fair amount of public comment.
Then there's a meeting afterward.
And we have a meeting to, to vote to send to referendum.
Either this budget or some other budget.
Or some other budget.
Yes.
No, not to referendum, you don't send to referendum till the annual district budget meeting on May 7.
And then we vote on the.
Okay.
The very next day, it's like a.
Right, 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 right.
But that's the post, that's the required.
Quiet time, right?
Right.
Okay, so we're gonna move to the next item on the, on the agenda for the special meeting, which is a presentation of the survey results from Dr. Ararti. Appreciate your patience.
He's gonna tell us to cut the superintendent's salary more and let me know.
No, he's gonna tell us, that was a mistake.
Folks, I'm just gonna wait until there's a copy in front of all board members. Folks, good evening. I did threaten my brother and six sisters that they must stay through the, the survey results, so, so thank you so much for, for enduring. I, I just, I just wanna make a comment that has nothing to do with your, your next superintendent. Because I think many of you know, I was a superintendent for 20 years, and this is painful. It's painful what you do, but I think that, that, the piece that from, from the outside looking in, what you did do despite having differences, you did it respectfully, and you lose sight of children. So, congratulations to the 12 of you. And I'll tell you, a board of 12 is much more difficult than a board of five or seven or nine. So, so kudos to, to the Region 12 Board. Let me, if I could, give you a sense of what I believe the work that we accomplished together over the past couple of months. I, I know two things. It snows, and it snows in, in Region 12, because we moved so many meetings. I just wanna make a comment that Deb Bliven, who was the conduit between Pat's office and my work and your work, what a star she is. Always picked up the phone, always had a smile when I met with her, and this was just an add-on to her already busy day. I just wanted to mention how, how terrific she was to work with. The executive summary that you have in front of you is a result of 18 different focus meetings, two actually taking place on Wednesday because of snow outs. I'll be at the Washington PTO meeting, then I'm heading to the, where am I heading? Burnham Community Meeting, which means that I, I would have met with all of our PTOs, all of our faculty meetings, isolate meetings, calls, one-on-one meetings. And the range of attendance had gone from as few as one to as many as 20. So, I believe that this executive summary does represent a, a real nice sense of community between Roxbury, between Bridgewater, and between Washington, with well over 150 folks on the survey. And that's an enormous number for a district this size. So, what I, I found and what I put together and what I tried to summarize for you is that as far as the skill set, and boy, you know what, if, if your new superintendent dials into this meeting, I think the information that I had gathered is spot on. That the belief is that your new school leader has to be really, really sharp in, in both the political frame and the fiscal frame. And I heard that conversation over and over and over and over again. That with, with what's taking place, particularly with the state, the, and particularly with what's happening with federal dollars supporting public schools, it just, it's, it just exemplifies itself that it has to be a priority. The, the additional information regards to skill, a, a real deep understanding of collaborative leadership. And I think the last piece that I just want to mention under the skill piece is the complex learner. And that there were conversations, most of these were private conversations around the complex learner. And I use the word complex learner, that in, in some cases, it's medically fragile, in some cases, it's, it's, it's learning challenged. But it's the complex learner, and usually it came from moms and dads, they just wanted to make sure that the service, and they're really proud of the service. And many of what I'm sharing with you, it's not a criticism, it's a continuation of best practice. And that, so the conversation really was around, could you please make sure that whoever is coming in understands our needs as they are met today for tomorrow? In regards to character traits, not surprising. Someone that, that will exude trust, is a problem solver, someone who's really bright, someone who's honest, holds themselves at a high professional standard, has common sense. And what's interesting also is the sense of humor piece. And that was a conversation I had in a number of places. If you go to page two, the conversation that, that I asked in most of our focus meetings was if you had the chance to say one thing to the school board, what are you most proud of? And what are you most concerned about? And, and that really did elicit some great conversation. Item number one, it was tricky for me to, to put into words, but what I want you to take away from item number one, the ownership and pride that each community takes for their local school. Boy, did I hear that in the community that I wa, I was presiding in. I heard it in Roxbury, I heard it in Bridgewater, I heard it in Washington, just how proud they are of their school. And the continued conversation about the regional building that we, we, we sit and stand in this evening. Lots of conversation about what folks believe is an extraordinary education for your K-12 student. Private school opportunity in a public school setting, I heard that conversation at least two or three times. Also, conversation around the staff that works with your children, mostly coming from moms and dads. And that somehow, some way, the assembly has really been a, a nice end product for, for their child or for their children. Success is through the partnerships that are presently in place. And I, I heard multiple times, and particularly through the survey, parents as partners, parent voice, and student choice, personalized learning. and student choice, personalized learning. And how the district i- is really front-loading opportunity and resources for personalized learning. Learning personally for each child. The challenges are, you, you discussed many of them this evening. Uh, the challenge is, how do you maintain? When, when you're working with a really tight fiscal package, how do you maintain the opportunity without retrenching for children? That was a conversation that we had. Item number one is a polite way for me to say that, that I believe the region is a complex region. Uh, and there are differing opinions, and that's okay. And the, the, your new superintendent or your next superintendent needs to continue the hard work around bringing all those opinions back to kids. And somehow, it, it feels so much better. Similar to what you tried to do, and I think you did successfully this evening. Item number three, lots of conversation around cost per child. You know, how, are, are there things in the region that we could do differently? That, that would, would net the same outcome with fewer dollars. In the elementary school conversations that I had, not a negative, but just a continued awareness around transition. What happens when you leave that, that comfort zone into the big house? And what do the transition programs look like? It works for my child, let's make sure the new superintendent understands what's happening around transition from building A to building B. And the last thing that, in regards to the challenge, is that, that how do you spread what you know to your constituents and to your voters? And how does that, that perhaps take away what in some cases feels like a volleyball game with referendum every spring, uh, rather to a better understanding of, of the work that, that needs to be in place? Um, in addition, what I tried to do is to bold print out the, the common conversations and the themes that came from your survey. The most important thing that I think I took away from every meeting that I attended was that the hope is that your new superintendent will go on a very lengthy listening and learning tour before they recommend to you and to others. And I think that, that the definition of lengthy, if your, your new superintendent is on or around July first, that that person spends at least a few months really understanding, an in-depth understanding of, of Region Twelve. Lots of conversation around continued visibility. Really important, particularly to staff, particularly to the leadership team, and to mom and dad. I had shared at a number of meetings that, that it was my belief, from the information that I had gathered from you, that the AGSI experience, which is coming up in two thousand nineteen and twenty, is a really important piece going forward for this region. And the hope was, from the conversations that I had with a whole bunch of folks, was that the, your new superintendent understood AGSCIENCE, understood regionalization, understood the importance of public relations, and understood the, the importance of collegial conversations with superintendents that will be sending children to your AGSI program. Conversations around school construction and capital planning, conversations around, how does somebody new recognize the level of your staff and leadership team, and then inspire them even further to make sure that they're all willing and wanting to stay in Region Twelve? Conversations around communication, conversations around parents as partners, and conversations, I didn't put on this, was around that the, the new superintendent, just similar to what you did this evening, never loses sight of children. That represents the executive summary I also included, which was presented, uh, to a number of, of folks in different platforms. And thank you, Karen Fields, for doing that, because I think that the region did an extraordinary job of advertising everywhere that I was going to be. I want to also give you a real quick snapshot, and we'll talk a bit more detailed when we move into our non-meeting, that from a recruiting aspect, I was pleased that you'll find that when we have the chance to debrief, that you have a number of sitting superintendents who are interested in your work, you have a number of assistant superintendents who are interested in your work, you have a number of highly, highly regarded building-level administrators interested in your work. So I am quite certain, I feel confident, that your, uh, your search will land your next superintendent. Uh, and I'm also quite confident that your new superintendent will understand the executive summary, and that your new superintendent will be blessed to, to be in Region Twelve. Where, at least it's my sense, um, that from a student perspective, this is a really, really nice place to learn. And I think from a teaching perspective, it's a really nice place to teach. So, just to close, the hard work that you just did for, for almost three hours, I know is appreciated by, by those who are on the backside of the decisions that you made. There's no easy decisions. Um, and that I've really enjoyed getting to know you. I've really enjoyed getting to know faculty and staff. And I just want to mention also to Dr. Cosentino, that she has been very accommodating. And Pat, I want to say publicly, best of luck to you as you move forward. Questions at this point? Yes? Special needs. Pupil services. What it means is that the, 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 particularly in the comments on the survey, that folks want to understand, um, how to directly reach, when needed, the superintendent. So it could be an open, um, half an hour every other day, it could be whatever that person wants it to be. But the, the, at least the takeaway that I had was, um, can we have something in place that we know that rather than going through robo, and I'm not saying this is what happens, but rather than going through robo calls and ending up giving to voicemail messages twenty-five minutes later, that we, we have a way that we can connect when we need to, uh, to your chief executive officer? Sure. Other questions at all? Yes?
Hang on. How, there were a few meetings that still haven't happened yet?
Correct.
Is that what you said?
Correct.
So, I'm assuming then, once you meet with the, if there's anything that comes up that's not already here, that would get incorporated? Okay.
Ms. Gore, the intent, we, we just ran out of days. We had so many make-up and snow days. But what will happen is that I will bring to you in our non-meeting, before we start the interviewing process, the information that I gather from the next two meetings.
Great.
And I met with two first electments, and I've got one to go.
Okay.
And so that's, those are the meetings that still have to happen. And we just ran out of days. That's, that's, we, we, between snow days, early out, and late in, um...
Yeah, no, that's okay. I just wanted to make sure that they are heard
And they sure will.
And feel incorporated in this, that, that this is not a final document.
Sure. Because what I didn't want to do was to prolong the application process. I didn't want to move anything back, because I am nearly, if not absolutely, certain that candidates in your pool are in other pools.
I'm sure. Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay, no further questions. Just to be clear, what we're gonna do is we'll adjourn the special meeting, and then the, um, the search committee will convene. And at which point, we'll, we'll finish our discussion with Dr. Arardi. So, um, unless there's further questions, Jim? Yep, thank you. That's what I was looking for. All those in favor? We're adjourned.